Moving on to item.
Please rise if you're able. Heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord Jesus Christ, for your grace and your mercy. Heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord, for bringing us all here together, Heavenly Father. We thank you for all the visitors, Board of Trustees, Superintendent, and all the school staff as well, Heavenly Father. We thank you for each one of them, Lord, and the students as well that are present, Heavenly Father. Lord, I pray, Heavenly Father, that as we go through this meeting, Heavenly Father, we place the agenda into your hands, Heavenly Father, that we would receive it, receive it, Heavenly Father, that we would understand it and give us discernment, Heavenly Father. We thank you, Lord Jesus Christ. Let us make the best decisions for our school district, Heavenly Father, in your mighty and precious name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, moving on to item four, public comment. Do we have any other public comments? And moving on to item five, canvassing of results of the Pierceall Independence, the Pierceall ISD Board of Trustees runoff election, place six. The Pierceall Independent School District Board of Trustees, Frio County, Texas, sits as the canvassing board to canvass the PISD runoff election of June 20, June 7th, 2025, on Tuesday, June 10th, 2025, in Pierceall, Texas. The results are below: Dora Matas Rodriguez, 573; Logi Rodriguez, 398. I certify that the tabulations of returns is true and correct as shown by the report as tabulated by the central counting station of the election. Witness my hand on 10th day of June 2025.
I move that the Board of Trustees accept the election results as reported by the Frio County Elections Administrator, Doro Matas Rodriguez, 573; Logio Logi Rodriguez, 398.
Have a motion by Lionel Gondada?
I'll second.
Have a second by Mari Benavides. All in favor? Okay, passes unanimous. And then we move on to item six, swearing in of elected board member, place six. Ms. Audrey, our notary, will handle that.
I, Doro Matas Rodriguez, do solemnly swear that I have not directly or indirectly paid, offered, promised to pay, contributed, or promised to contribute any money or thing of value, or promised any public office, or employment, or the given or withholding of a vote at the election in which I was elected, or as reward to secure my appointment or confirmation, whichever the case may be. So help me God.
Before we move on to the next item, I just want to take a moment to recognize Mr. Logi Rodriguez for his service to our district. As a district, we are grateful for his time, dedication that he provided throughout his tenure on the board, and I just want to thank Logi for his commitment to our students, staff, and community. And welcome, Dora, to the board, and we look forward to working with you. With that, we're now going to move on to presentations. Item seven A, Superintendent Report, and we have Dr. Jody Spore to present.
Good evening, board, staff, community. As a part of transitioning into new superintendency, presented the board with a meeting in my home joint. This is an update on my annual meeting. So, we did a better set up on the anniversary, but we're not on Saturday. So, we got a picture that was the night that we signed the contract, the engagement contract. And part of kind of it used to be a kind of a, which is purpose involved to it, right? So, it's an opportunity for me to understand what kind of not only these whole district, but also the control of the community, and to listen to your ideas, perspectives, expectations, learn from staff, and campus, and your group leadership, to establish relationships with our HR and external stakeholders, sure, with the city, with the county, of all the different communities, to set up these various challenges and opportunities to learn important issues related to the vision of our community, in order for us to establish some priorities for planning forward, and to establish and strong follow-up relationships with our teachers, our community. So, here's just the activities we had. Since the beginning, we attended the tasking workshop in the building. They have regional workshops, and so we have some building. I drew a picture, different boards from Region 20, so we had everybody from Berkeley down to Versus Springs and everywhere in 20. We will do our summer leadership institute that begins tomorrow, so we're excited that we're going to be able to come there in that area. I actually, we do the board president, and I give an update newsletter every two weeks of what I've been seeing doing. With business leadership, we established a cabinet leadership team which is smaller than the previous cabinet was, so we formed a new leadership team. And we also made me a principal, so I'm talking about probably better supporting structural leadership than we previously do now because of our practices. We have been waiting with our district educational improvement committee, and that assessment unit also has folks from business and parents of the community, you know, as well as, and we're talking, you know, confidence in these stuffs. We're looking at everything, using that to guide where we record needs and expectations of what we need. Right ahead to the board, I was not being excited, I'm sort of up with the United Office. I met lots of local business leaders and pastors. I've got the board here in Pierceall. I'm super excited, and a quick form of everything works now, and so, you know, a little more monitor, which is what I had done for about six years. And our events will sound off of nice student events, that part of our community, the year, to the year concerts, and then we'll be near awards programs, and of course, our graduation that we have. What I'd like to come back to is in talking about our mission, our vision, and our goals. So, I'm talking to everybody here, so welcome back to the board, Heavenly Father. Our mission statement says, "Our purpose is to play in our community. Our purpose is to have a learning environment, state a new training, a student center, where everyone is accountable and all students are empowered to succeed." Our vision said, "We will lead the way, we will be recognized, we will prepare students for life, college, and career." In order to meet those, we have goals and priorities. And so, looking at the, what we're looking to, we can see that our top goal is to improve achievement for all students, while at the same time ensuring effective and efficient operations and effective communication. That's what's been described, what we're looking at, right? So, number one is a student. So, we're going to see a line up on this screen, and this is a star from these tests, explanation. So, we've got some literary members come out from the stage. There's a woman, so now we'll do surgery, reading, math, and then fifth graders, fourth graders, reading, math, fifth graders, reading, math, and a fifth class. So, just to look at different reviews, you study what we've seen on how long it lasts. This is 2023, 2024, or 2025. And then you'll see some categories there. And so, approaches is passing, okay? The state will call that passing, but it's the lowest level of passing we can have, okay? It's not grade level, but it's considered passing. So, it's like squeaking by with a 70, right, if I'm thinking of what my students' report cards look like. Meets is considered grade level. If a student isn't meets, we say that those students will be able to go on to the next grade level and be successful, and they will be able to graduate high school successfully without a lot of interventions and a lot of extra support. Masters is as if I got an A. Master says, "If you can master grade level work all the way through, you're ready to leave here, and you'll be set to go to college without having to do remedial work, et cetera." So, when we look at these numbers, these are on a 100 scale, and this last one is a composite. Now, this is something that only has to do with accountability, okay? And the state accountability system was renewed, if you will, by the legislature. They did not toss it out. There was some talk of tossing out the STAR test, doing something different. They said, "No, we're going to keep this." So, right as I came on board here in Pierceall, we got the 23 accountability ratings. It's 125. It's a little, we still don't have 2024 accountability rating, so I don't know what letter grade we are. I mean, I know, but we don't know. 2025, they will give us that in August after we start school. We'll know what our letter grade is, right? We can calculate it on our own, but we'll know what our letter grade is. What this composite does is this is an average of these three numbers. So, 60 plus a 17 plus a 2 divided by 3 gives us a 26. Why is that important? Because you would probably say, "Well, but we did better this year because we were at a 60. Last year, we were at a 55." And I would say, "No, because the 29 is better than the 26." The reason this is better is because we have more kids on grade level. So, by looking at meets and masters, it says, "No kid drops. No kid drops, okay? No kid drops. I don't want to focus just on getting you to pass. I don't want you to drop. I want to know where you are and make sure that you do as well or better next year." If I'm only looking at approaches, then I lose a lot of the top kids, and I would challenge you. I've met your kids. They're great. Their kids are great. Teachers are great. I think that these numbers are severely below what they should be. Severely below what they should be. And that's, that's a matter of focus and intention on, on starting with me, going, going all the way through the system. The kids can do it. And I will tell you that this time next year, when I'm going to present these again, you're going to go, "All right, look at that growth," okay? Because the state says, "Either achievement or growth." We'll give you an A, a B, a C, a D, and an F. Either achievement or growth. So, we're going to get it on growth next year because look at how much we can grow, because we know the kids are capable, okay? The kids are totally capable. So, you can just see the numbers. I'm not going to read them all to you, but you can see, we've kind of gone down. We've kind of gone down. If I look at composite, we've gone down. Ooh, we've gone down. We've gone down. We've gone down. We've gone down. We, we know that now. We make plans now so that we're going to change that trajectory. Middle school, those eighth grade students take more tests than anybody, okay? Those eighth graders are going to take four tests. So, sixth graders and seventh graders take two tests. They take math and reading. Eighth graders take math, reading, science, and social studies. So, they get all four tests. Again, oops, sorry. We're looking at barely passing. So, numbers look a little better. This is, I'm at grade level, and here is, I'm at an A. So, again, a little better, but not where we want it to be. So, you can see we had a growth here, but we have a bit of a growth here. And we have a bit of a growth here. We had a big drop here. I can tell you that this is statewide. Just so you know, and I'll analyze that later in the fall for everybody. Science, we had a little bit of growth here, and we have a ton here. Again, not numbers that we would want to take home and celebrate, but it's where we were starting. More than we though. High school, we'll take English 1 as a freshman, English 2 as a sophomore, number 1 as a freshman, biology as a freshman, and US history as a junior. So, they take it all over the books, right? Same thing with the pressures, meets, and masters, and then the composite. You can see that the highest one is US history, and that's across the board. And you could see the biology, they did a little bit better, but we can see that we've got some concern of reading and a bit concerned of math, too. So, one thing we know is that this is, when I look at this, I'm seeing a system, okay? I'm seeing a system that needs to change in order to support teaching and learning in order for us to be more successful. So, looking at that data analysis, the big bird's eye, we have three-year decline scores with a few exceptions. We have low scores with those meets and masters, which is at grade level or better. And we have a lack of cohort growth. And what do I mean by cohort growth? I mean, if I go backwards, I don't look at, in 2023, 24, 25, so in 23, they were in sixth grade, 24 in seventh grade, 25 in eighth grade, 57, 59, 64, we have a little bit of growth. But as I look at all of them, we're not seeing a lot of cohort growth, right? I'm not seeing kids grow from one grade level to the next. So, that's another way we look at it, is that cohort growth. Student attendance is lower than it needs to be. We've been tracking in the, at 90. You think 90% of the time, our kids are here. 10%, they're not here. That's, that's a lot of time that we're missing in school. We've had some surveys that I've looked at. We have perceptions, and then we have data. We have perceptions that certain things are working really well, and then when I look at the data, it's like the data's not showing us what you thought. So, that tells me that some of what we're asking aren't based on data. We're asking, "What do you feel?" instead of, "What is the data telling us?" We have some, we have some really intense facility needs, and I've got some engineers here tonight who are going to be talking to us about some of that. So, I know I'm getting an amen from a lot of the principals on this, a lot of the teachers. So, we know we have some needs, right? But what we do have is we have really caring committed staff, really great students, and a really good community. We've got all that we need to move forward. We just, we're going to have a plan, and we're going to execute that plan and get better. So, when I look at a root cause analysis, why, why is that data showing me this? So, one thing I can, I can say is, I see that we have a lack of vertical alignment. So, as I'm looking at pre-kindergarten through 12th grade, and I see that we've got some reading gaps all the way along. Can't really align vertically to serve a student rather than a certain, having fit in to four different schools. How are we serving our families aligned? Instructional resources, there's some better things we can use. There are some more proven products and some coaching that can come along with that. And professional development. And professional development also is training and resources for all of our folks, from every side of the, of the house, from the folks who work with our business office and our HR, they're getting some training and some help. Our operations folks, they need some training and some, some assistance in their team. And one of the root causes that I will tell you is, in looking at the calendars, again, three years, the last two years, we've been on four and a half for a four-day calendar. Part of the surveys and perceptions says the four-day calendar is great. We love it. It's great for kids. It's great for adults. It retained all of our teachers. It brought our attendance up, and it's bringing our scores up. And I will tell you that the data is showing me something a little different. We have 156 instructional days. Before the state said you can go to minutes, which several years ago, they said, "You can just do minutes. You don't have to do days." We used to go 180 days. We all remember 180 days of school, right? 180 days, and now we're only coming 156 days. But after the close of the STAR window, we have, we have a whole month. That whole month of April is the STAR window when we test all of those tests. How our community is going to get an A, B, C, D, F, report card? How our kids are going to be, you know, shown as progressing or not towards their next school year? 18 of those days, four-day week, that's almost a whole marking period, a whole six weeks is after that test. So, when I look at, how many days do we have to teach for the kids to show us? It's about 138 days. And I will tell you that that is a, that's a tool. That's a tool. I need a screwdriver, and you're giving me a hammer. So, I would, I would ask that this is something that we look at. I love a three-day weekend, but I work all year long. I'm here on air. Our kids aren't. And I, and I've seen that we're doing a lot of stuff to try to keep kids motivated to come to school those last six weeks. My parents are probably the one. But why? They can play in, you know, at home. Because it's, we, we could technically do some other stuff that everybody's done. They're tired, you know? And so, that is one thing that, that I think we really are hurting ourselves with a four-day calendar if we are going to have, and that's 138 days after the end of it. The reading test is the first test. It's 132 days that I have to get kids on level for reading, and you saw where our scores are. So, that's, that's concerning. Another thing is long-range planning, where we need to be looking at a three-year, a five-year, and beyond plan when we're thinking about what we're going to buy to help implement instructionally, what are we going to be doing with our facilities? You know, rather than just looking at right now, what are we looking for? Replacement cycles of everything from air conditioners to tubos to Chromebooks. Those need planned, and so, we can plan for that and save a little bit each year so that it's not as, as brutal when it comes up to time to replace all that. So, those are some of the things that we need to do. As far as next steps, it's about aligning some systems, processes, and resources so that we're a lot more efficient, and that we're all moving in the same direction. As far as instruction goes, we're going to focus on math and literacy supports, okay? And those math tests, do you know they have writing on them? The science tests, the socials, they have writing on them. Our third graders are expected to do an essay, revising and editing, and short construct, short responses as well, all of it typed on a computer. So, guess what we got to be doing in kindergarten to get ready for third grade? So, every, every day counts. We will be focusing on those, some new instructional resources, coaching and support for the teachers. I'm not just going to go, "Whoop, here's a Cadillac, but I'm not going to teach you how to drive it." We're going to, we're going to give them all the support that they need in order to be successful with that. And that's not just, we're going to do that in July and hope that you remember that in February. It's going to be ongoing throughout the year, especially here as we get started. We won't need the same kind of support in a couple of years because we'll have it going on. We're also providing some coaching support for campus leaders. We have a lot of new principals. And I say new principals, I was a principal for a decade. These folks haven't had that opportunity yet, but we want to keep them here. I want to keep our people. I want to grow our people. I want to give them the support that they need to do their job very, very well. Also, for new teachers and DOI teachers, they need extra support as well. So, we're bringing in a former mentor program. We've got some people, we're going to go help them be a really great teacher, because when we bring new teachers and we invest a lot in them, and to lose them at the end of the year, because it's tough, hey, the first-year teacher is so tough. We are going to support them better so that we end up keeping them with us. And then long-range planning, we're at the board, we will be doing some long-range planning. We're going to revisit mission and vision of goals. It's time when we look at our goals. It's time to put some quantifiable numbers and some measures to those goals that we're going to be reporting out to you guys so that we're all accountable. And we're going to look at comprehensive needs assessments. What do we need? What do we need to be successful? And, and using that with data. So, that's where we are at the end of a little over 30 days. And then here's a circle and markers that I shared with the board in the interviews was, this is taken from the guy who found the RAP space, and I kind of tweaked it a little bit, that everybody of us wants to be a valued member of a winning team on an inspiring mission. We can define winning in a lot of different ways, right? But you want to know your value, and you want to know that your team has it together, and that we are, we are striving to be successful in whatever it is we do. And you want to be inspired, and especially in teaching. I mean, I think schools, that's, we all do it because of something a little bit more than just the final number, right? So, that is, I'll report out for my first thirty days. Any questions? Any questions?
So, I did have a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
So, we're due to receive our accountability ratings in August? And those accountability ratings are based on, when we look at scores, meets, and masters. We get our points from those two categories.
From all three together, yeah. It's, they're, so accountability has three parts to it. And I'll, I'll pick on the names. So, they have three domains, and the first one is achievement. So, they're going to look at all the tests that they took, everybody. The second domain they're going to look at The second domain they're gonna look at is growth. And there are two ways to look at growth. They'll look at growth kid to kid, how did Jody do from third grade to fourth grade, reading to reading, math to math, they'll quantify that, and then they'll get a score. Or, they'll look at Jody's achievement and her poverty rate. Because they say it's, you know, they're not gonna compare Pierceall to Highland Park. They're gonna compare Pierceall to Carizo, or Pierceall to Petula. They're gonna compare like schools. And then the third domain is what we do for the feds, and that is called closing the gaps. And that's where we look at all of our sub-populations. So we'll look at special education, we'll look at English learners, we will look at race and ethnicity. And then we will look at how did they go as far as the federal goals. So federal goals are set, and if we achieve those. For the high school only, you know, it counts the same as this, career, college, military readiness. So, it's either achievement or this, basically. So when they come up with their achievement one, they have a percentage for the Stark EOC test, which were these. They'll have a percentage for graduation rate, and they'll have a percentage for meeting those CCMR goals. And then what they do is they weight each campus based on the number of kids to give us a district score. So it's a complicated thing. But, when you look at this, apprentice kids count for us one time, meets count for us two times, masters kids count for us three times. That's why that composite score is important. So, just looking at the high school, you can see where we had a lot of these meets numbers here. The number went up here. So that's why we really want these to be up here. You can see this number was higher than this number, and this was a ninety-two. It's because of that right there. So we want this composite to be as high as we can. So, I've told the principals, my minimum's gonna be, for you guys, the challenge, and you'll meet it, is eighty, sixty, thirty. Eighty percent of our kids should be at least passing. Sixty percent of our kids should be at at least grade level, and thirty percent of our kids should be making about an A. So eighty, sixty, thirty is gonna be our goal, and if we get that, we're gonna talk about like a fifty-seven. So, that is what's gonna help us get that eighty-four B rating. But they'll take growth. So to go from that to an eighty, you're like, oh my gosh, that's a big jump in one year. Growth. Grow by one point. Student can take that test, and, and this next year, just give me one point more. You made a five, can you make a six? I get a point. If you made a nine, can you make an eighty-nine? I get no points. So that's what we don't realize when we're, when we're looking at this, is if any kid drops, we get punished. If any kid grows, we get rewarded. So I may be a struggling learner and make a five. If I make a six next year, I get us a point. I may be a gifted kid, and I made a ninety, but, oh, I just passed, didn't matter. I made an eighty-nine, that hurts. So those are the kinds of things that it's important for us to know because the story that gets told is a single letter. And that's a hard thing for us to have to swallow when it's so much more complicated than that. But if it's gonna be a single letter, I wanna make sure we know how. And it would be everything we can to, to really make the most of our opportunities. So, once we get that, we'll be happy to get everybody in-depth. We'll do a workshop on it, sit, you know, where, in a workshop, we can have a very informal setting, and people can ask questions, and we can go over it, and the principals can go over it, too, so everybody understands, we know more, how we're gonna score. But absolutely, meets and masters is where it's at.
Any other questions?
Thank you for the communication, thank you for being transparent with the community as well to let everybody know what we stand. We appreciate it, we appreciate that.
My pleasure.
Like I said, this is, we can work with this. I'm excited because seeing how hard our kids are working and how hard our teachers are working, we just need the right tools. We just need some screwdrivers and some hammers, and we're gonna be fine. We're gonna be great. I promise you, next year's gonna be a lot more exciting.
No one else has any other questions? And will move on to item eight today. Discussion consider approval of the letter of support for from Pierceall, next meeting to the city of Pierceall. And I believe you have questions from the city near Pierceall.
Good evening, members of the school board. First, I'd like to start off by welcoming Dr. Score on behalf of the city of Pierceall, on behalf of our city staff and departments. My name is Yolanda Sosa Moran. I am the Assistant City Manager, as well as Community Development Director that oversees parks, library, development services, which is your planning, zoning, and curving. And, I made that up in my division, but. And then I'd like to introduce our Public Works Director, Mr. Hector Vandada. And we are here tonight to do a, a small PowerPoint presentation to show you what we are here for is, we are submitting a TechStop Transportation Alternatives Grant, and we are asking the school board to support this project. This is the, thank you. This is the Pierceall. This is the Pierceall Bicycle and Pedestrian Connectivity Accessibility Project. This is a transportation, this is a transportation alternatives grant. This is the first time that the city of Pierceall has applied for this grant. And it was through TechStop. It is a two-step project. The first step is a preliminary, not-so-detailed application. And so we submitted that back in February, I believe. And if the committee at the TechStop Transportation Department reviewed it, if they liked it, we were able to move forward to step two. We submitted two of these applications, one was Phase One and Phase Two. We got approved to move to Step Two, which is where we're at today. And we decided to submit for just one of the applications, even though both were approved. We're going to do Phase One. And the project overview is that we're applying for this grant for 2025. And this project is to construct some critical sidewalk infrastructures. This effort represents Phase One of a broader city initiative that is part of our comprehensive master plan. And the, this particular project is designed to complement an existing project that is currently ongoing. I know some of you may have noticed on Business Thirty-Five, there's a lot of activity happening. One of them is TechStop is currently doing sidewalks on both sides, on both sides of Business Thirty-Five. And then the city is also doing a major project, and that is, we are laying water and sewer.
It's water, they want it to be extended to the outskirts of town.
Almost all the way to where Jack's puppies that install.
The land.
The lane of funds. And, and the objective of that is, we wanna see Pierceall grow. And the only way to, to make Pierceall grow is to be able to provide that infrastructure to encourage development. And we do not have that infrastructure out there. So, to complement TechStop sidewalk connectivity, we are applying for this grant. This project is going to enhance pedestrian safety accessibility by building approximately fifty-two-hundred linear feet of six-foot-wide concrete sidewalks. It's going to connect downtown Pierceall, the Pierceall Public Library, and the multiple school campuses here. The project purpose and scope, of course, is a, to create a bicycle and pedestrian connectivity that's going to enhance infrastructure to our school campuses, the public library, and downtown Pierceall. I talked about the scope, which is about fifty-two-hundred feet of sidewalk. The route is gonna, including, and Hector is going to touch on the map on this presentation. But it starts at Florida Street and Elm, I mean, East Trinity, Elm Street, North Piccon, to Trinity, to Elm Street, from North Elm Street to West Comall, East Trinity, Business Thirty-Five, Florida, and back to Business Thirty-Five. It's going to include ADA ramps for handicap accessibility, pavements, markings, signage, and all these TechStop requirements for the specific details of the construction of the sidewalk. The importance of this project is that it's going to enhance the safety and accessibility for students and pedestrians. It's going to leverage the current TechStop sidewalk project. And of course, it's going to strengthen our multimodal transportation here in Pierceall. We were out there, some of you may have seen us, we were out there taking pictures of the kids trying to cross. We see them walking on the vacant field by Walmart, McDonald's, trying to cross over. And then Piccon, and then there's some side streets that have no sidewalks, and they're very narrow. The parents are trying to pick, pick up their children. So, taking all that into consideration, that's how we came up with the streets. Hector's going to cover the project location now.
So essentially, this is a little hard to see. So basically, project commencement is gonna start on, and I know y'all are familiar with this, this location. And it's gonna start at the intersection of Alabama and Piccon Street, which is adjacent to the Junior High. So from there, it's gonna travel south to East Trinity, and from Trinity's, we travel west down to Oak, and then cross over on Oak, continue on Trinity to Elm. And from Elm, it's gonna travel south again to West Piccon. Well, how we gauge these streets, we, we did sort of a, a study, a foot traffic study. About seventy percent come in from the, in between Arnold Street and, and the McDonald's, which is an empty field should refer him to. And the other thirty percent seem to cross it around the quick server area. But instead of taking the sidewalk that's currently there, they, they tend to go straight towards Piccon Street. And from Piccon, they rear left to go to school. So that's why, that's how this lot came about. So it essentially, we're gonna connect the TechStop, you know, you see that there's one, one shade of blue there that comes from Florida Street and it travels south to East Street, and that will connect the TechStop. We'll connect to the TechStop library. Uh, the current project is TechStop. Currently, there's no sidewalk. You know, the current project starts on Florida and heads north. And we currently don't have anything heading south. So we're, we're gonna, we're gonna interconnect those two, those two projects together from that stretch over, and the rest is foot traffic, which is the county independent school. And that's basically it. Any questions?
This project also is going to replace some of the existing sidewalks that need to be replaced, they're in bad, misrepair. So we will also replace a majority of that sidewalk and make improvements to that.
So I had a question. I think it's just a clarification on, I think you started your slideshow. It said something about bicycle, but we're just talking sidewalk, pedestrian, walking.
But well, in the house, the sidewalks allow for the kids to safely ride their bicycles as well.
On the sidewalk.
Whereas right now, the kids are riding their bicycles and walking on streets that have no sidewalks.
And obviously, we don't have bicycle lanes.
Right, exactly. So what is our next step? Of course, is for us to complete the final application, which is what we're in the process of doing. And we are also going to coordinate the design and construction with TechStop's plan improvements. We did receive a letter from TechStop that is sponsoring our project. What does that mean? That means that TechStop liked what we were submitting, and they are willing to come in and help us with the design and construction of this project. So that, that is exciting news for us, and we hope to continue to move the application forward. We'll know sometime in August how we did. That's why an endorsement from the school board is critical and definitely enhance our application because it is connecting various critical areas of our community. I'd like to, to end the presentation with an invitation to invite you all to a community meeting. The city of Pierceall, and I'd like to invite the community and this board as well. City of Pierceall is holding a community meeting on Thursday at six o'clock in, in conjunction with the Chamber of Commerce. And there will be live information that's going to be discussed, this application. This project is one of the items that's on the agenda. But we're also going to discuss, what are we doing with, some of you may have seen, the planters and the trash cans that are along the business downtown area. We're going to discuss what are we doing with those. We're going to discuss a city of Pierceall facade grant that the city of Pierceall has had for quite a while, but we don't seem to have businesses that take interest in applying for them. So one of our goals is to reach out to these businesses and help them improve their facades through a fifty-fifty grant. We're also gonna discuss our hotel motel, or what we call the hot funds, and how those can be used to help local businesses. We're going to discuss the, what we call the TERS district. Those, on the map, it's certain areas where we can provide what we call incentive programs to try to bring businesses in. As you know, the more businesses we have, the more we can create jobs. So we want to talk about that. And then the Chamber of Stocks and other agenda items they would like to discuss. So we invite the community to please come, we wanna hear from you. There is a survey that we prepared that's on the city's website. We do have this invitation on our city's website, and it is also on our social media pages. So, if anyone has any questions, we are prepared to address them. If not, we want to thank the board for allowing us to come forth, and thank the community, and we hope to see you all out there.
I just had a comment. First of all, we appreciate everything y'all are doing, you know, for the safety of our, not necessarily just our, our students, but, you know, our community members, you know? And Mari and I sat in a few of the meetings as well with TechStop, and we know the density of work they put into it. And of course, you know, we talk about grants, it's our money, it's our taxpayer's money, so putting it into it, you know? And, you know, so, so, and the city manager has been in those meetings as well, numerous meetings. And, if, you know, I, I thank them for, for all the sidewalks going north. So, and, and I appreciate y'all putting all that effort, and, you know, and I, I'm assuming that we will, you know, make that motion for, for the support better. But I just wanna say that, that, you know, by y'all getting the grant for the, for our community, it's gonna, not necessarily just better, you know, the safety of our students and, and members. You know, I think it, I think it applies, you know, for people who walk in, you know, getting healthier, you know? All, you know, there's the different aspects, you know, that we can look at in different ways, bicycle riding and all that. And of course, accessibility to our local library, what, you know, the superintendent's report, you know, stated. You know, we need, we need, you know, accessibility, safe accessibility to the library as well. And, you know, I know that, that the city has been partnering with our high school, you know, students and, and, you know, the principal, you know, and, and we appreciate that partnership, you know, with, with us as well. So I just wanted to thank y'all for that as well, so.
I appreciate that, sir. I'd like to point out, in the same way through seeking out connectivity to our library, where the city is also exploring, possibly approaching city council about the city's library hours, perhaps a weekend. We are, we have, some of you have not visited our library. We are making improvements to it, including the study lab, study room, where students and parents can reserve and, and use that for extending our hours, maybe on the weekend, maybe late evening. We'll be putting out a questionnaire to see if that's of interest to the community that we feel in, in keeping with the goals and visions and objectives that Dr. Score talked about. I think this is a great opportunity to partner in that way. But we're also gonna, we're looking at creating an adult literacy program because you think that if the parents can learn with their children, then that creates that area of improvements, and it helps our school districts also with this one. So in any way that the city can partner, we're doing that. We've also created, in our community group, we now have a senior community, which grew from fifteen senior citizens to about eighty-five that come during the month. And we're also creating programs for them as well. So we are growing, we want to pay. are growing, we want to thank our council for supporting us in that endeavor, and we would like to partner with the school district in any way we can. Thank you.
Listen on the phone, is it from the near the live where we can watch it completely? None of us members will be there.
We can possibly make it live, I was at this point, we do have our public information officer, Ms. Yonah, I will speak to her, and she will be there, so maybe she can make it live, so some of y'all can listen to some of this, because it's really important information that will benefit us for the entire community.
Yeah, that'd be great, we'll be in San Antonio.
Oh, I see, yes, that's right, yeah, that's a great idea, we will try to do that. Anything else, move on, because we also have a city council.
If there's any other questions or comments, I'd like to make a motion.
Well, I actually have a question for Dr. Score, I know we spoke earlier today on the traffic light, I don't know if it triggered TechStop, triggered me to ask you, but.
We will be meeting with city folks and TechStop folks, are we able to reschedule or are we keeping it on the twenty-third? It'll be on the twenty-third, so I'm going to the twenty-third, we'll be talking about Book Street right in front of the high school, and what that will entail.
Would the city manager be aware?
And part of this grant is also going to include lighting and signage, traffic signage, and so we're bringing that in as well, in some of the areas, you know, back to. Thank you, so I'm sorry, we have to rest.
If there's no more comments, can I get a motion?
Yes, I moved it, the board of trustees approved the letter for the City of Pierceville for their certification to learn to project application to TechStop.
I have a motion by Lionel Gondola, do I have a second? And I have a second by Monica Neri, all in favor? United.
Thank you very much. I love you.
Moving on to item eight B, discussion, consider approval of MOU with the Institute of Higher Education, SWTX.
So, Mr. President, the administration recommends that the board of trustees approve the memorandum of understanding, the MOU, between Pierceville ISD and Southwest Texas College for the twenty-five, twenty-sixth school year. For next school year, we will offer early college high school to qualified students who have the opportunity to earn credit for high school and college at the same time, the goal would be to eventually graduate from Pierceville Early College High School with an associate's degree from Southwest Texas College in addition to their high school diploma, so currently they can, but now it will be on our campus, so this is the first part of it, is entering into it an agreement, a memorandum of understanding in accordance with Texas Education Code one-three-zero-point-zero-eight, and Texas Administration, Administrative Code, chapter four, so chapter three.
Looking forward to the early college high school, that's our implementation.
We have Ms. Bass in the audience.
This year is our planning, next year is the implementation.
And how many students do we have?
So far, we have twenty-seven, that's our board.
Twenty-seven, awesome.
Twenty-seven, we had our summer bridge today, we had all but six or ten, so we'll have more tomorrow.
Is this position going to require its own, the way it states on MOU, principal or director, and will we be, will we get some of that?
So currently, we've got Ms. Bass is going to have two assistant principals this coming year, so that's going to help out with what she's got, and as the program grows, it will grow, so we're not there yet, but we will shortly get there, where it will require our staff some additional administrative support to ensure that the kids get everything they need, because there will be a lot to keep up with, because it is not just our high school piece, but it's also the college piece, the testing to get in there, the programs of study that they have, and then ensuring that they are not just, okay, you're associates, you're done, but what is your path if you're going on to a four-year beyond this, to really make that seamless for them, or if they're working, getting an industry certification with being at that, and getting them on, so that position will grow as the program grows. So we're starting with a number of kids, and our board is worried every year, and that will be something that we'll be bringing to the board as part of our new goals, to set for our district improvement plan, is what kind of growth we want to see year to year, because that will also be, again, added expense for us, because we pick up the college education this way, so we're picking this up because it's a worthy thing, so we'll be planning for growing those students, which means more support for the kids financially, their books, the coursework, and in addition to the support staff at the high school.
And if there's any educators with a master's that would like to adjunct instruct, it could help this school district as well, it could help us too.
It gives us a lot of opportunities to, you know, to partner with even like Anne in San Antonio, will work with us to help teachers get their masters ready from several districts of San Antonio, work with them when the teachers get a stipend, or they get their books, or they get a tuition cut, if they will go back and get their, get their masters in the content area, which would then allow them to be instructors at any junior college, they just have to get accredited, and, yeah, it's something that I did when I was a principal as well, was an adjunct faculty and taught a dual credit class, so just, you know, if you need to be one of our administrative field, go back into the classroom for a period, we can be very flexible with that. Yes, ma'am.
So I do want to ask, on the, on this early college high school, so these students obviously would have dual enrollment, correct? Not dual credit?
Dual enrollment.
It would be dual enrollment, and currently, we would be making a partnership with Southwest Texas?
Yes.
Okay. So we're continuing them?
Yes.
And so is there ever a possibility, a possibility of looking at other partnerships?
Always. Many, many districts have several universities that they work with.
Right.
Other partnerships can, or other entities can have other things that SWTX may not have. Absolutely, we're not, we're not, we're not entering into a sole provider, if you will, for dual credit classes, now as far as the dual enrollment towards a degree seeking is one thing, that's to offer dual credit, we can, and we can always switch it on, usually this isn't what's working for us.
So the partnership that should be agreed upon would only be annually?
It's kind of like what we had in the past with our dual credit, and so it's kind of something that's done yearly as a renewal, just as an understanding and agreement.
It is a one-year, commencing August first and terminating July thirty-first, twenty-twenty-six, it may be renewed, and it may be changed up, we can, you know, so that is item number four on page thirteen of the MOU, it is for a one-year at a time, so we will be reviewing the fit that it provides.
For the early college.
Because one of the requirements for early colleges, then we have an MOU, we were partnered with a college, for the early college high school, so we were partnered with them for dual enrollment and dual credit, and so now with the early college high school, that's another assurance that we have to abide by.
So Ms. Bass, I did have a parent call on it, and as we educate, it was going to educate yourselves on the early college high school stuff, I think they're looking for more meetings, information, you know, to provide information of how the early college, and how early can we start talking about this in the other grade levels, so that they're growing, knowing about it, and they're moving along. Parents are calling the office too about what is it, they're thinking it's through this, but no, this is the high school, that's their own, so informational meetings here and there would be good.
Right, so as Dr. Score mentioned, you know, the early college high school, everything will continue to grow, so every year, it'll, it'll get better and better, this was just a planning year to work on this first cohort and get them started, the eighth grader's going into ninth grade, and so as we, you know, get our, all of our positions filled, and, you know, roles and responsibilities, we'll be able to expand on that to ensure that, that communication starts not just at the junior high, but at a medium, start having those community meetings to encourage and promote the early college high school.
So there's twenty-seven students right now, why does a number forty come up?
So the number forty, we had to submit a four, we had to submit a cohort ideal, but the twenty-seven does help us meet the criteria that we have to look at, so right now, we have to hit a certain percentage for at-risk students, and so that twenty-seven percent does give, our twenty-seven students does give us the touch points that we're supposed to, or we're required by the state to reach.
What was that requirement, that criteria?
I don't have it on me right now, but it's, I think, the third, we, it's tied to our district at-risk percentage, we can't be, don't quote me on this, it's like, we can't be like ten percent more or less than what the district is.
Well, I'm excited, I wish high school the best of luck with it.
Yes, of course, we're very excited, and just for everybody, we do offer the dual credit, so this year, we had over a hundred and forty-eight students taking over three-hundred credit hours, so it's something we were already doing, now we're just putting a name to it.
I want to thank y'all, because during graduation, y'all had a lot of kids, had a lot of hours, but y'all had a lot of them with associates.
Yes, they are.
So that's been going every year, so it needs a lot of thinking.
Since twenty-twenty.
Does anyone have a question? That's the only decision that's passed. Can I get a motion for a second?
I make a motion to approve the MOU for the higher education with Southwest Texas College District.
I have a motion by Marco Reyes. I have a second by Adrian Arenas, all in favor? Motion passed, it's unanimous. Moving on to item eight C, discussion, consider approval of the clinical experience agreement between PISD and UTSA for the twenty-five, twenty-sixth school year.
Yes, sir, so we entered into an agreement with UTSA to place clinical students, so those are the students, candidates for certifications or licenses as teachers, counselors, specialists of programs, UTSA offers to require students to have field experience, and so by statute, we need to have a written agreement with them, this is an agreement, not for next year, but it's a five-year one, and this is a renewal, this is something that we've had in place for several, you know, renewal periods, to allow student teachers who would like to come out and do their student teaching work here in Pierceville, we really welcome them out.
Does anyone have any questions?
It's like one hundred percent behind you.
Yeah, definitely.
This is great.
Are we waiting to recruit?
Yep.
Exactly.
If anyone has any questions or comments, can I get a motion?
I move that the board of trustees approve the clinical experience agreement between Pierceville ISD and UTSA for the twenty-five, twenty-sixth school year.
I have a motion by Mari Neri.
All in favor?
I have a second by Lionel Gondola, all in favor? Motion passed, it's unanimous. Okay, moving on to item eight D, discussion, and consider approval of the memorandum of understanding between community and schools in Pierceville ISD.
Now, we're bringing lots of MOUs tonight, these are, it's that time of year, communities and schools provides Pierceville ISD with a full-time dedicated staff member who is a licensed mental health clinician, and they facilitate referrals, intakes assessments, creation of treatment plans, they work with all of our campuses closely to provide additional services to meet mental health needs here in the district, and it's a one-year contract and a continuation of the services that have been provided in the past, and the campus administration is requesting that we, that we continue this and expand it if at all possible.
I think it's a great resource, the only thing is, we don't ever hear about or not date or.
We can certainly provide you with some data, some facts, so that you'll know how many cases they were.
And if we can have that in our ministry.
Right, yeah, I think the same thing is like, you know, it'd be nice to see what percentages of the services are being used, and are they more at elementary, more at secondary, maybe it's both, I think that'd be.
Absolutely, we can give you a, I can give you a report back on this last school year, some of the data that they have.
We have a report during the year last year.
Okay, we can get a recap, absolutely, that would be great, thank you.
Anyone else have any questions, comments? Okay, if I can get a motion on item eight D?
I make a motion to approve the community to approve the MOU and the Pierceville ISD.
Okay, I have a motion by Marco Reyes, I get a second? I have a second by Diana Hughes, all in favor? Motion passed, it's unanimous. All right, moving on to item eight E, considering approval of selection of NTR engineering, civil engineers to provide necessary consulting services.
So I'm bringing to the board, I've got three folks here I'd like to introduce, we have Ms. Rose Lee Young, who's working with us as a consultant with all things maintenance, operation, construction, and with him, we also have Sean Smith, he's an engineer and vice president with NTR Engineering, and Ben Powell, who's also an engineer, they are leaders in the field when it comes to engineering, and they've done lots of work with my service school district, you can think of, and we have some concerns of the existing synthetic tract in field located at our stadium, and a professional review has uncovered some existing drainage, structural compliance, and encroachment challenges that we have, we need the professionals to come in and perform a more detailed investigation, and they will be able to provide us a report of what we will need to do moving forward, but because of the scope of the work and the price tag involved, it requires it written off professional engineers by statute, so that's why these gentlemen are here, and I'm requesting their approval and the opportunity to negotiate contracts and fees with them once we hit the magic number of fifty, but we'll bring that for approval of purchase orders, but up to that point, for them to be able to begin to work, time is of the essence, we need to get to work on this as soon as possible.
Do we have an estimated cost of what that will be for this, or none of this?
For the work that they're doing, as far as the work or the preliminarys? The preliminary is probably, I think we learned, I was saying, at least thirty-five, so after they go, they look, and they'll tell me, then I'll be coming back next week with more. And that's the preliminary, to get some of the professionals to come in and look at it, we're talking to geologists, they can then look, again, these are multiple issues that have to do with the subsurface and the drainage there, in addition to the encroachment, so.
Basically, what we're talking about, right, and this is what we've already talked about in the previous meetings, correct? It's like in the alleyway, the fencing, and all that.
Yes.
There's a major drainage problem there, it doesn't need to be.
I just want to clarify, that's what it is.
Yes, sir, I do believe then you all had come out in the fall and done some preliminary work, and then it stalled out, if you will, there was, you know, and we have a transition here, so I need to pick that back up right away, and it's not something that we can do in-house, we need to have the engineers onboard, and they need, they need to have some more information, it was not enough to just do a visual and an aerial, they need to have some of the geologist's reports coming in too. If you have any questions, so they're here, and then once they have information, they'll come give a full report to the board of the extent of the work that would need to be done, to be safe and compliant and not approach upon the city's area.
Definitely, we'll clarify, lot of questions.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, we need to get it done, you know, basically before the law actually. I'll just say, I'll just say.
There's slapping right there.
Yeah, I know, I know.
We, we, we intend this, we know what happens come August, we know what parts of the district are working on, we understand that, but. I have a little marching orders for you guys, wear no more bandages, let's fix this right, and we really can't move forward with any other improvements until we fix foundational work, you know, this, this, it has to be done, it just, it flat out has to be done, and, you know, if we were to get a belly washer right now, we might, we might have some issues. you know, if we were to get a belly washer right now, we might, we might have some issues. So I, this keeps me up at night. So I'm very thankful that Luor's come in and is going to help me understand and translate some of the engineers' work, but I've seen some of the preliminary stuff they did in October, and it needs to be done now.
Yeah. No, and I agree, I agree. I agree with what you're saying about bandages and all that, and, you know, coming in and taking over what we need to have done already. So and I just throw that, threw that comment in for fun, but anyways.
Yeah, then I'll be out there doing whatever I can. I'll bring water, I'll bring a man, a shady umbrella, whatever, you know, you guys get to decide.
They're professional, take care of it.
Oh, yeah.
Absolutely.
So with that said, I make a motion to approve the selection of MTR Engineering and the superintendent's negotiated fee and contract with MTR Engineering.
Have a motion by Yolanda Gondola.
And I'll second.
Second by Doramondo Rodriguez. All in favor. Passed and unanimous. Okay. Moving on to item eight F, discuss and consider approval of the board resolution regarding this summer work schedule.
So I have Lizzy Leon here, she's our human resources director, and as we're looking at our summer schedule, we have a year-round four-day week, yet once summer starts, our four-day week changes and becomes now a forty-hour four-day week. So from our normal workday, we now, in the summer, when we don't have kids, we don't have teachers, we're asking our folks to work ten-hour days. And so one of the things that we looked at was asking if the board would be willing to approve this resolution so that those employees who work thirty-five hours a week would be paid for their forty, and instead they would end up working thirty-two hours a week, which is in line with what they are currently doing. Because to work a ten-hour day, I don't know if we get ten hours of effective and efficient work. For most of us, that is a long time, and it's not watching kids, it's, most of it is sitting in our desks, doing the work that is needed to do to get school ready for the next school year. So believe me, we all pulled hours that we need to do to get the job done, but to be able to tell our clinical folks, folks standing in phones in the front desk, to not work ten-hour days would be a great boost, and again, keeping in line with what we do during the full school year.
Does anyone have any questions? Okay.
No.
But I think it would boost morale.
Yes, I agree.
I think they're probably would be giving you a big thumbs up.
Perfect. If there's no other questions or comments, can I get a motion for a second?
I am with the board of trustees about the resolution regarding summer work schedule and wage payments for reduced salaries.
Have a motion by Monty Hernandez. Can I get a second?
One second.
Second by Diana Hughes. All in favor. Motion passed and unanimous. All right. So we're going to move to item nine, closed session, and it is, it is now seven forty-two, and the board will now adjourn to executive session pursuant to the following sections of the Texas opening meetings. Uh, double pursuit, whoever called five-five-one-god-seven-four, and five-five-one-god-zero-seven-six.
The Board of Trustees returns to open session at 9:45 p.m. Moving on to item 10A, Discussion, Action, and V in regards to the Intruder Detection Audit Report. Discussion in executive session. Can I get a motion for that, right?
I can make a motion to approve the Intruder Detection Audit Report as presented.
A second.
Have a motion by Marco Reyes and a second by Landa Ganda, all in favor. unanimous, all, motion passes. Moving on to item 10B, Discussion and Take Action on Personnel Report and Recommendations. This was discussed in the executive session, if I have a motion as well?
I make the motion to accept the Personnel Report and Recommendations as presented.
Have the motion by Landa Ganda, have a second.
I'll second.
Second by Dan Hughes, all in favor. Unanimous, motion passes. And if you have no other action, can I get a motion for it?
I so moved.
I think.
Have a motion by Lionel, second by Marty, all in favor. Motion passing, beginning journey at 9:47 p.m.